Happy to see everybody here tonight. Like the call of the Rockingham County Department of Fisheries and the Board. Pretty good crowd, it's spread out as usual there. A few of vacant spaces, but pretty good. And your county's doing pretty good in that regard. We look forward to some conversation on that a little bit later. In a moment Pastor Steve Latimer from St. Charles Church is going to deliver our indication. And I'd like you to stand with that indication. And Mr. Berger, would you lead us in the pledge? Would you lead us in any manner with that? If you do have a lot of devices that spontaneously make noise, perhaps you could silence him at this time. Same as that, Mr. Latimer. Thank you so much for coming.
Your honor. Let's pray. Almighty God, we do invoke your presence in this place to seek to follow. Down through the ages, men and women have sought you out for wisdom for decisions. And Lord God, here tonight, for each man and woman in this chamber, especially those in places of authority, Father, I pray from the depths of my heart that you will give them wisdom to make decisions that are best for Rockingham County, Lord God. How true it is, this motto, this motto simply says, "You're in a good place," Father, as far as I'm concerned, there's no better place than to be in the arms of God Almighty. And so we ask your presence here tonight, trusting and believing that you're going to help each one with each piece of business that stands to be taken care of. And Lord God, may you receive the glory for it all. In Jesus' name I pray, and everybody say.
Amen.
Face the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again Reverend Latimer, thank you so much there, and Commissioner Berger for leading that. Our next item is four, which is the approval of the agenda. I believe we have one adjustment, but we would accept either a motion to approve or to add to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we add to the agenda under new business 12A, the new federal cares act COVID-19 funding for DSS protective, adult protective services, child protective services, and essential worker additional cost.
We have a motion to approve the agenda with the modification that Commissioner Pertle just mentioned.
So moved.
And we have a second. Further discussion here, none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
We also have a consent agenda available. This agenda has been available to the commissioners and to the public for the last 10 days. The consent agenda consists of non-controversial items that do not require individual discussion in our opinion. However, if any member of the public wishes to question something, please contact our county manager, Mr. Metzler, and he'll be happy to explain the nuances and the changes thereof. That said, we would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda at this time.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Commissioner Travis to approve?
Second.
Second. Mr. Pertle, further discussion here, none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
As I check, we only have Reverend Latimer's name on the public comment, and I believe you filled that square already. So we're going to move to item seven. This is an update, no action required commissioners, but an update on the 2020 census activities. And I believe Mr. Rick Farmer, who is a partnership specialist with the U.S. Census Bureau out of Winston-Salem, is listening to us. Is that correct, Mr. Farmer?
Yes, sir.
And you have the stage.
Glad to be here, talk to you a little bit about the census. Next slide. The Census Bureau has opened up seven offices across the state of North Carolina. You can see them on the presentation there. Durham area census office is what Rockingham County calls under, the people that are conducting the census, Rockingham County, are supervised out of Durham ATO. Has the census taken in the United States every 10 years since 1790? In 1790, there's about almost 4 million people here. Today, it's around 330 million. Next slide. The census is all about power and money. As far as money, it determines where over $675 billion in federal funds is distributed back to the states and local governments. They use census counts to determine how distributed that money. So the more people we count, the more money your county gets back. I like to say that money does not follow the need. You have a lot of needs in Rockingham County, as every county has, but it doesn't follow the needs that follows the numbers, the numbers, the number of people their county. Each person that they count is worth about $1,700 in federal taxes in here in North Carolina. So, you know, if you've got four people in your house and you just don't respond, you know, that's about $600 in federal taxes that is missed. It's also about the power, it determines where the congressional districts are drawn. The census data, next slide. Last 10 years ago, we just had 13 seats in Congress, and we didn't pick up any seats and we didn't lose any seats. That's the last time. There were 36 total seats, and they're expected to pick up four or five more. Since the last census, there's been 2 million people moved to North Carolina. And we're expecting to at least pick up one seat, and if we do a good job with count, maybe we could possibly pick up two, but that's just speculation right now. Next slide. These are participation rates for the last three census. North Carolina, currently, we have a 58.9% response rate. Now, these rates are before we start knocking on doors, that will begin on August 12th. As far, Rockingham County is at 61%, so you're a little bit ahead of the state average. And these other counties I have listed, other counties that I work with, that have been assigned to me with this. Our state goal, 82% response rate. Next slide, it's a listing of your municipalities and the current response rates. Madison, County Madison is in front with 62.5%, closely followed by Lynchworth at 62%. And you can see the response rate as of last week with the other towns and cities. Next slide. The main reason people don't fill out the census form and submit it is because they're concerned about privacy and confidentiality. But every person who works for the Census Bureau takes an oath, and this oath is for the rest of their life, even if they're no longer employed by the Census Bureau, that they cannot divulge anybody's personal identifying information, such as your name, your birthday, your address. Or if even to do that accidentally, we could be $550,000 and/or five years in prison. The vast majority of people who work at the Census Bureau will never see any personal identifying information. For example, I'll never see it. Only those that are working with the data and that are collecting the data will see that information. And what people don't really understand is that the governor already knows more about you from your tax records and other records than you will ever get from the census form. So census forms only 10 questions, and it's mainly about your name, your address, how many people live there, your race, your gender, and your ethnicity. And that information is put up in aggregate manner, how many people of this race or that ethnicity or that gender in this town or in this county. And so that, your personal information is sealed for 72 years. And then 72 years from now, long after we're gone, it'll be released for genealogical research purposes, so our ancestors can learn a little bit more about us. Next slide. It's important to note that we never ask anybody for their social security number or for to make a contribution or donation. We don't request, make requests off the path of political parties. We don't ask for PIN numbers or passwords, credit card numbers, anything like that, never. So if someone knocks on the door or calls you or sends you something in the mail, ask them any of this information, what looks like other questions, you know it's a fraud. Next slide. So first time in 2020, we have three ways of responding to the census. We can do it online, we can do it by phone, actually talk to the live person, we give the information to them, or you can fill out the form and mail it in the old-fashioned way. We expect between 90 and 95% of residents that will finally respond and will do so online. Next slide. So the Census Bureau is about data collection. It's a data collection arm of the government. We collect over around 100 different surveys, of which this 10-year census is only one. We're not affiliated with either political party. We just collect data, and then it is used for many different purposes. To add, did I give a little update on the operation timeline? Self-response by phone, mail, mail, and internet was supposed to go through October 31st, but we've got an update today that the Census Bureau is planning to wrap everything up by the end of September, a month early. So even though there are a few people knocking on doors of those who haven't responded, they can still choose to do it themselves before someone knocks, or even after they So just non-response follow-up, the door-to-door numeration, October 12th through the end of September, unless they change it yet. Service-based numeration will be September 22nd through 24th, three days where numerators will be going out to agencies that deal with the public and provide services, especially to low-income people and homeless. Group quarters numeration is going on right now, and it'll be wrapped up by September 3rd. Group quarters is when we go out to nursing homes, drug treatment centers, hospitals, college dorms, anywhere you have institutional living. And then we will be doing a numeration of transitory locations like parks and RV parks and marinas from September 3rd through the 28th. The next slide is my contact information, if you would like to get in touch with me or have follow-up questions. So at this time, I'll open it up for any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, any questions? Well, you must have done a great job there, Mr. Farmer. Everybody seems content with your information, and we do appreciate the update. I particularly appreciate that $1,700 a person figure, that's got my attention. So we'll try to do our part, and thank you for attending this meeting virtually and providing this info.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Right.
Just sign off.
All right, we're signing off on you. We're now down to item A. Pat Galloway, our Director of Financial Services, is going to save us some money.
Good evening. Would ask Davenport Company, Mitch Bergulio, I was with Davenport Company, to look at the county's outstanding debt, to see if there was any potential of savings that we could achieve now that the interest rates have gotten to record lows again. So he's identified some opportunities, and I'm going to let him come and present sort of the process he went through, or the company went through, and what the recommendation would be. And after that, then there will be some action for you guys to take if you want us to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport.
Yes, sir. Well, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you for having me this evening. Mitch Bergulio with Davenport Company, we serve as the county's financial advisor. And as Ms. Galloway said, we were asked to take a look at the county's existing debt portfolio, particularly in light of the current interest rate environment, very good interest rates, as you all know, I'm sure, and have been following. So we did that, looked at the existing debt, and we identified six potential loans that could produce refinancing savings. Those loans have maturities of 10 to 12 years, with interest rates ranging from a 218 to a net 4.4%. So we went through the process of talking with the existing lenders to see if there was any opportunity to reduce the rates with the existing lenders, as well as went out with a bank RFP process to open it up to the markets and see what kind of interest rates we could receive. You all have in front of you, hopefully, a summary of the bank RFP process that we went through. I think it was in your packet, and there may have been an updated one set out for y'all. But through that process, we asked for the refinancing bids for all six loans, and then the four loans that had the highest interest rates that produced the best possibility for savings. Through that process, we received five proposals from different lenders. The summary of interest rates is on page two, it's on the top half of page two. The lowest interest rates were provided by JP Morgan Chase at a tax-exempt interest rate of 1.17% and a taxable rate of a 1.62%. One of those current loans is a taxable loan, and it will remain taxable, so has to be refinanced on a taxable basis. So the two lowest rates, again, 117 and a 162. This proposal from JP Morgan would be non-callable, so you would be locking in those interest rates for the next 10 to 12 years, 117 and a 162. So hard to believe, there'll be much opportunity to refinance those down the line, but we had a good conversation with staff, and if there is dollars that can become available to pay off those loans in the future, they can be set aside and accounted to pay that debt service over the years. The savings produced from those interest rates, and I apologize for the small font, we had wanted to get it all on here, is at the bottom of page three. And its column E is the numbers that we're talking about here with the JP Morgan proposal. It produces about $450,000 of annual savings, or about $45,000 per year of, excuse me, $45,000 a year of annual savings, or about $450,000 of total interest cost savings over the life of the refinancing. So we, in talking with staff and bond counsel, we're recommending that you all move forward with the JP Morgan non-callable interest rate proposal, again, that generates approximately $450,000 of total savings for the county. If you want to move forward with that, as Ms. Galloway said, there's a couple action items that you all would need to take tonight, including approving the recommended bidder or selecting a different recommended bidder should you choose to, adopting a preliminary findings resolution, which essentially states that you would like to move forward with the refinancing, and gives us the information we need to submit our application to the local government commission for approval. The final thing that you would be doing is calling a public hearing to be held at your next meeting on August 17th. And if you do choose to move forward, we would come back on August 17th to hold that public hearing and adopt a final approving resolution. Those would be your last action items on the refinancing. We would go to the LGC, Local Government Commission, for approval on September 1st, and then we would close on the refinancing in mid-September. So that's very high level, I'm happy to get into as many details as you'd like, but I think at the end of the day, what we're recommending is the lowest bid JP Morgan Chase at a 1.17% tax-exempt rate and a 1.62% taxable rate, which would be non-callable for the life of the loan.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hall.
Appreciate your presentation. Could you go over the points of the closing costs for these loans?
Yes, sir. So we have not dug in, we have not finalized these yet. I expect them to come down, but right now, we have incorporated into the numbers 120,000 of fixed costs, that was our preliminary baseline number. Again, I expect those to come down. We are not going to have as many lenders' fees as we were expecting. In this case, JP Morgan Chase will only include their attorney's fees for this case, which would be $6,500. So we're going to work with the other professionals and nail down any other costs that need to be included. It's going to be ourselves, bond counsel, JP Morgan Chase fees, and then any fees associated with recording of the real estate.
So we'll have those final numbers?
Yes, sir. Those will be included in final numbers, and we'll coordinate with staff and get those details.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The savings figures that you provided factored in those costs?
Yes, sir. Those savings figures are net of those costs. So $450,000 is after paying all the costs of the prepayment and putting the financing into place. So there are, with your existing loans, there are some prepayment penalties for paying those loans off early. Those are wrapped into the refinancing as well as the cost. So the estimated $450,000 is net of all the costs to pay off the old loans and to put the new loan into place.
Are there any prepayment penalties with Chase?
No, sir, because it's non-callable. So you would be locked into this financing for the life of the loan. It's non-prepayable.
And once you got these figures from Chase, did you give other banks a chance to match or beat the figures?
No, sir. So we did an RFP process that was, we took bids at a date and time certain, they were due at 11:00 a.m. So we didn't take bids from one bank and go back to others. We have a process that's set up to try and give everybody an opportunity to give their best and final price at an exact date and time, sir.
Are you happy, Pat?
Yes, I'm fine with this. I think you can give us better write-in than what you're saying.
You know, if we were here about 10 years ago, we would be astounded at these 1% rates. Further questions, gentlemen? Then we need to...
Mark, I've got one more.
Go ahead.
So with this overall savings, as far as the payments, are they fixed over the life of the loan, or are they structured where they're higher at a certain point?
Yes, sir. So each of the individual loans have different final maturities. So for example, two of the loans that we're looking to refinance go out to fiscal year 2032, excuse me, and two of the loans go out to fiscal year 2030. So we have solved for each of those loans, we're giving you level annual savings every year throughout the remaining years of that loan. And so your savings will be slightly higher over the first 10 years until the two loans in 2030 pay off, and then they will step down a little bit for the final two years. But each loan that you're refinancing individually will have the same amount of savings every year.
Okay. And the first couple of years, what is that figure?
So through the first 10 years, it's approximately $45,000 a year, slightly under $45,000 a year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor, do we need three individual votes?
For a vote on this?
Yes.
It would be a majority, yes.
Gentlemen, does somebody wish to suggest a different bidder? Or would one of you wish to move for a selection of Chase?
I'll move to approve the process, start the process to refinance with Chase, with the figures as presented.
Motion to approve JP Morgan Chase as presented. Do we have a second? Have a second, Commissioner Hall. Further discussion here, none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, by nay. It's now time to consider adopting a preliminary findings resolution, which basically consists of what you provided written and orally to us. Do we have a resolution or a motion to provide a resolution approving these preliminary findings?
Is that resolution going to be this tangible document, or do we need another document crafted in the form of a resolution?
Counselor?
Yes, I don't see a specific resolution in the Davenport packet here. Is it...
I think it says, "Resolution authorizing the filing of an application for approval of an installment financing." Is that the one we're talking about, Pat?
Yes, sir. It's not part of our memo, that's a document the bond counsel had prepared.
So that's the one we would be doing, John, is that right?
Yes.
Is that adequate for our purposes, John?
Yes, John. Yes, Mr. Chair.
Did all the commissioners have a chance to see that?
Do you want me to read it again?
Yeah, I saw it.
I need a motion to approve these preliminary findings resolution.
I'll make a motion to adopt preliminary findings and do a resolution for binding it.
Motion to approve a resolution? Do we have a second? And second, Commissioner Hall. Further discussion, here, none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, by nay. And now we need a motion to call for a public hearing, which would be held on August 17th as part of our regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second. Further discussion, here, none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Now, this is kind of after the fact, and I don't presume that this is going to happen. I'm sure the Davenport organization would not be anticipating. But should something occur between now and the 17th, we will have the option to make adjustments. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, this action tonight will allow us to start the ball rolling with the process, along with the Department of Commerce Commission and the space. But until you adopt that final resolution, we can't close on it. So you can have the option at that point.
That's what I thought you would say. Thank you very much. Further questions before we allow these folks to escape?
But tonight's action locks us in on those rates.
No further questions. We thank all the Davenport organization. And Pat, you're on top of things, we appreciate you so much. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you for having me.
You're welcome. Felicia Farrell from our Health and Human Services organization, it's going to be a tag team with Mr. Pruitt. Jeff, thanks for being here.
Good evening, gentlemen. I think you know Mr. Jeff Pruitt, he is taking the lead on our opioid task force, and I'm going to go ahead and let him get started on the presentation.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, the opportunity to work with this ongoing problem in our county. We started... Give me a minute, things not... We started, give me a minute, thing's not working. There we go. Yeah, we'll make it work. Thank you. As we started this again back in the spring of the year, we restarted the opioid task force in March, and we pulled the group back together again, and just to start to discuss what were the needs to work with this problem in the county. What we realized that we need, we needed to establish an executive team, which we did. We needed bylaws, which we established, and we are in the process of approving, and then reestablished committees of, of education, marketing, and we've been very fortunate with Regisville Police Department, who has led the way on starting the post overdose response team. Starting these things in the first few months has been great. I mean, we, we hit the ground running. Unfortunately, what we do know is, when the COVID epidemic hit, we still were able to work with this. It's just, we've not been able to actually come to the table and meet so much, but it's been very helpful that, that Felissa and her group has been able to allow us to meet telephonically and keep moving forward. Again, give me just a second, this clicking's not working. I came in with a little bit of grant money, and, and thanks to Roy and his expertise, I was able to go ahead and start doing some videos of what do, what do we offer in the county, and do we have treatment? One of the big questions I got in the county all the time is, we don't have any treatment. Who are we going to see? We do have that. We do have four organizations in the county now, and one independent. Everything's in Regisville and in Eden at the time. I live over into the west. One of the questions I get from my ass was, what do we have? So, we were able to do some PSA, we were just doing PSA, and to do three videos that are out in social media with three of our treatment organizations, to be able to explain to the community who they are, what they do, how they treat this, how do you get involved? Do they take insurance? Are they, can they do private pay? And just basically, how do you get into the door? Now, those have been out there now for four to five months. I'd like to be able to tell you how many people have looked at these. I don't really know, but they're out there in multiple areas, and again, Roy's done a great job of getting those out there for people to see. Again, since we can't do face-to-face, we're having to be a little more creative how to get this information out there. So we're doing more things virtually to get this out there. Planning an opioid symposium for the fall, and we picked the date of October 15th. That was supposed to be in person. We were going to do it on RCC's campus. We'd already started working with them. We already got our speakers together. We're still going to do this. Unfortunately, we can't do it on RCC's campus now. We all know why. So we're going to do a virtual symposium to bring in all of our speakers, our treatment providers, other speakers. Do this virtually. I'm getting North Carolina prevention and technical assistants to come in and film this. I've worked with them several times on several projects in the past, and I believe a year or so, a little over a year ago, a couple of the commissioners participated in the event that was in Kernsville. So, I think that was a very good event. We're going to do a smaller venue to concentrate on our county. It's going to take a little bit of funding to do it with, virtually, which I'm also working on. I still want to look at October as our date. That's a little aggressive. I still think we can make it. If not, maybe I would have to push it into getting the finished product done by November. The big thing is getting the recordings done. Setting that up with Daymart, with Tribe Behavioral Resources, our other providers. We do have a speaker that's coming in that lost, has lost a child, and then, of course, prevention and recovery that is offered out into the community to get that information out there. We'd also like to somehow make this where the, the, the community can participate in some way, because we need the feedback on where to go from here. What would they like to see? What questions do they need answered? We got to get rid of our stigma problem. It's still a huge issue out there of people not really understanding, how did we get where we are right now? Why do people use the drugs that they use? And not finger pointing and blaming, like blaming our physicians, blaming the government, blame, there's enough finger pointing going on. We've got to work with the issue and move forward with this at this point. So I still want to get, this is one way of getting the education out there, and of where we stand right now, that's really the only way to get it out there that I see in the way we can move forward. That's still in the plans. We're still going to make it work. It'll just be a virtual symposium. The benefit of that is where we would probably do it in one or two places in the county, doing it in person. Now, we're going to be able to record this and use it for quite some time, and get it into our churches, get it into our schools, community organizations, and even businesses will be able to use this. And we'll be able to take it out and use it for quite some time, and then go back and edit as needed down the road. So I'm really excited about that, and I'm glad that North Carolina Technical Assistance is able to do that, and they even brought that to the table since we knew we weren't going to be able to do it, do it live. One other thing that we were able to do, 108 Challenge. 108 Challenge is out of Davison County. I've known Eric and his group that's been doing this stuff down there. I met him probably three years ago. Great organization. He brought in a national speaker, Michael De Leon. Michael De Leon is someone who's been in recovery for a number of years. Great story if you've never seen him. Was bringing it in as a live event for Davison County. Well, COVID hit, and they were not able to do that. So knowing him and being able to get involved with the stuff that he was doing, it was decided at that time to do a virtual training and a virtual event. The benefit of that was, we were able to record that, bring in Michael De Leon, who just, he's kind of an expensive speaker to bring into a county, because one of the reasons I was going down there and getting involved was, how could we mimic that? Because that's something that Rockingham County could do. Could we bring it into our school systems here? And, and get our kids to look at this and get this out into the community. But what we were able to do, and what he was grateful enough to do, and when I say him, Michael De Leon, and Eric, was, we recorded this, and we were able to keep it and use it for our county. Again, this is a speaker that would cost us probably to get him here, house him, probably five grand. We got this for free. It's been given to the school systems. It's out into the community. If they can use that in the school systems in, in the fall, that would be great. Other areas that we can get that out into, into the community, again, through churches and other social outlets, is, is, and how do we market that so that people know about it? It's, it's going to be a great benefit for people to learn more about the problem, not only national, but how to work with it in our own community. Again, we talked about the post overdose response team. This is huge, in my opinion. It's one of the things I was hoping to start, and it got started a little early, because Chief Hassel really wanted to do this program. He was the one, when he sat at the table at the task force, that said, "I want to do this." And he wanted to, and, and now, just to fast forward, as of July 1st, they have started a post overdose response team in Regisville. And we have a couple of our providers in the community that have tagged him with this. Now, this is how this is going to help us make this work, and it's going to help our providers out there also, by having a provider, a counselor that's going out with this team, and, and having peer personnel to go out, along with law enforcement as safety, and they'll be plainclothes. They're not out there to go face-to-face, but to go out there as, as a safety person. We can address this person 48, 72 hours after the overdose. We've got lots of information in packets that we can give them, also let them know what the resources are in their community and outside the community, if that person wants to move forward and get help at that time. What we also know is it takes six or seven approaches with that person to finally get them to make that initial step. So, we're going to continue to follow up with those folks. Now, they started July 1st. As of the last phone call we had, which was last week, they've made contact with four people. That's pretty good for Regisville, to make contact with four people. So we're hoping that down the road, that we can take this project that they've started and move it out countywide. But we're going to need more peer support specialists to do that. We're going to need our other providers, our other treatment providers on board with this, to do this. And, it's just a matter of taking the time, taking what they're doing now, and, and being able to put the information together over the next few months to move forward. I feel very positive about this. Taking some of the information that what Greensboro's doing. We were able to bring a trainer in from Project Lazarus out of Wilkes County to come and train the police officers. And that, again, Fred Brason, who I've, I know well, I've been working with him for a number of years, and he's one of the biggest initiators in this whole project in, in the state, was gracious enough to come down and do that. So, we're actually moving forward with that, and we've, and they've actually made contact with people, so I'm, again, very excited about it. And our, our initial date to start was June 1st. We had to push it back to July 1st due to some changes in personnel that were going out into the field. Regional Area Foundation, we're talking to them about a grant to, to possibly help market and do other things to get this spread across the county when the time comes. They actually stepped towards us and said, you know, this is something that they're also interested in, working with the opioid problem, and how can we do this, and, and how can we marry up? We're still in conversations with them on that, and there's a couple other projects that we, that we'd like to do with them, if possible. One of them is a small grant to do the symposium. So, I will keep you updated on what's happening with that also, as, as we get more. Our treatment team is wanting to work, which is also part of the task force, is wanting to work with our businesses. One of the things we're hearing from our businesses is, people interview well. We've got job openings, but when it comes time to go and do the drug test, that's where we're, we're seeing a lot of, everything is stopping. People either don't go, or they don't pass. They interview well. They have the skills that's needed, but they can't get past this. So how can our businesses marry up with our treatment teams to work with folks, to get them into treatment, and they can start working at the same time? Now, they have met once, pardon me. And again, we're going to have to do that by phone to set up the other meetings so that we can talk about this farther, because again, with a lot of businesses stopping, especially small businesses, and, and our treatment teams, or our treatment organizations, are having to reorganize theirself as far as how are they seeing patients and doing things telephonically and telemedicine. And they're reorganizing, reorganizing themselves so that they can provide better care for our folks in our community during this time also. Continued community education. We started to park the Spark Group several years back. That's really all, as far as we got with everything, was continuing to get out into the education and do more, more education in the community, more education in the community, and doing more programs like that, until we were able to move forward with the, with the, with the task force a couple of years ago, and the work that we're doing right Part of the education with this is to do exactly the things that we were talking about as far as, as doing the symposium. We can't do our face-to-face, so how can we do more videos and get more stuff out on social media? And we do still have a, a couple of videos that we can do through the grant that we had earlier in the year, and we're going to get those done, and probably working with our, our, our providers also, because we still got two that we wanted, two providers that we want to do and get that out there also. Numbers. I know somebody likes to talk about numbers. Our numbers are up for multiple reasons. People are staying at home. People are stressed out. Jobs, et cetera. It's, the stuff is very accessible. And, Rockingham County, as you can see on this slide, and this is May. I've also got June numbers here, which came in this month, and I was not able to get them on this slide and get it here now, but I do have them. But you can see Rockingham County's in the top four or five as far as overdoses in the state. And that was in May. In June, I have the slide here that we're still in the top 10. So we need to continue to work what we're doing, continue to work with the stigma issue that's out there. We need more, we need to get our providers involved more. Right now, we need to get people in the door. These providers that are coming on board, some of them are still new. They're still hiring. They're still getting people in place to be able to work with the folks there. We got to get them in the door. They are taking insurance. There is private pay. But how do we get them to take that initial step? That's going to be part of the education process that we're doing with people in the community, working with families, working with churches, working with our schools. The only thing we can do is provide the information. The only thing we can do is have the organizations here that can help the individuals make that first step. That is improving. When we started this a few, we hadn't, Daymart, we had, Daymart was our, was our one. Now we have four and one individual. So that's improved greatly. I would like to have one on the western side. I live over there. Sure, I'd like to have one over there. We're working on that. And this is one on the emergency departments, and as you can see, our numbers are up significantly from this time last year. So overdoses are up across the board, not just here, statewide and nationally. With that information, I hope there's a couple of questions out there. I'm sure there's a lot that has to be answered, and we're trying to get the answers to those. The big thing is, is we do have the providers out there, is how do we get the people in the door? Y'all have been to some of them, to kind of see how they work. Suboxone, medication-assisted treatment, you hear these terms. If people get involved, they go through the program, there is success. Those who make it through a program, it's about a 65% success rate. That's great, for those who make it through the program. I want the emphasis on that. For those who make it through the program, there's a 60, about a 65% success rate. But it's got to get them into the program and get them started. Good thing is, we do have the public transportation who's come on board that's helping them get to these places. There's actually stops in front of some of these places now, so that's worked out great. We're going to see an increase in one of the providers as far as, how many days a week are they here? And that's, that's all we can do, we can offer. Any questions from me?
Gentlemen?
Mr. Chair. Jeff, I just want to recognize how good of a job I think you're doing. I'm excited about your report program. I think that's something, obviously, the more contacts we can have with those folks that are in crisis with, with opioids, what I think you said earlier, six or seven times before you can hopefully get them into some type of program. So, that's a great step, but just a first baby step, because it's, we're going to have to grow that program in order to reach more of those individuals that are, are in crisis. So, I can, just want to encourage you to, to keep up the good work, especially with that program, because I think it, getting your peer support specialist and reaching out and growing those folks is going to be key to, to reaching out and, and pulling in those folks that, that are, that are suffering. So, that, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
The Narcan, we know it's an expensive drug. We know our EMS, our law enforcement are out there saving lives, and they're doing an excellent job. And I want the community to know how great a job that they are doing at saving the lives of these folks, and how important it is that if we don't save a life, we can't get them into treatment. It's getting that first step, learning what it is, and everybody in the community needs to know what that is, so that they can reach out and help. Gentlemen, thank you.
You're not, you're not off quite yet, Jeff. I don't think that's the first step. I hope the first step is we're trying to prevent the addiction process to begin with, and I know we've made a lot of effort with drugs, prescriptions, drugs, and those people that are capable of putting them on a prescription. Just out of curiosity, do you compare, the port thing has, has got to happen. It's got to happen. We identify the problem, now go fix it. Have you compared, you mentioned four port visits. How many Narcan uses were there in the same week that there were four port visits?
Well, on those four individuals, they were, they were all Narcaned. Now, used Narcan. Now, did law enforcement use it, or did they have it? That one, I can't answer.
No, I'm just pointing out, and I, I would doubt you have very accurate data, but I would suspect there are a lot more uses of Narcan by our professionals in the county, law enforcement, EMS and so forth, than port visits at this point. We need to get to a point where we're, where those numbers are pretty close.
Oh, absolutely. Again, this is new. This is one month into it, and again, Regisville's done an excellent job at putting the program together. job at putting the program together to where they can get out and reach. Lisa Ellington is onboard with this and her group, and Daymart. And what they're doing is they're putting in a schedule where each one of those organizations can take a week, where, you know, you have something, an overdose event, then they can get together, and within that 48 to 72 hours, with the information that they have, is to go and visit that person and be able to offer them something, treatment, something. But you're right, prevention is huge. Less prescribing would be great. Law enforcement, again, has done a great job, is putting in medication drop boxes so people can clean these medications out of their cabinet. We need to do more education on what medications to put in the drop boxes, so that we're not overwhelming our law enforcement. But being able to clean out the cabinets and understand that, you know, these medications in your house are dangerous, and then really understanding what the illicit drug is out there, and how accessible it is, and how easy it's gotten into the county, and how receptive it's been by our citizens as far as going to that so easy, because it's so cheap and so accessible.
I don't think anything's happened there, but I wanted to ask you, as, you know, workforce development's really important. We've had a major announcement about bringing more jobs into the county. I suspect that you're going to hear more announcements in the not-too-distant future, but they require training. And I'm just wondering if drug detoxification or addiction treatments are part of any workforce development training?
They should be. Two of our organizations do provide that treatment, and they've opened that up to businesses and other organizations in the county. Whether they've been used at this point, I haven't gotten that report. Again, as we started this, and as we started talking with our businesses, you know, the COVID epidemic hit, and it's kind of stalled us. I don't want to say it stopped us, but it stalled us. We're still moving forward, we're still doing the things that we were doing, but we're doing business differently than what we would have done it three or four months ago, four or five months ago, where we'd been more in-person. Now it's more by phone and virtual trainings.
Thanks, Jeff. A couple of questions. Now, before the port started, I think EMS and Sheriff's Department and local PDs were actually giving out packets already, because the county created them.
Correct.
What are they doing different?
Well, you've got that one-on-one, you've got a person going out, and a peer support specialist is someone that has the knowledge and probably firsthand knowledge of what has just happened to that individual. So you've got someone that has the sympathy and empathy that can work with that individual. So not only are you being given information, printed information, you know, this is what's there, we're not just handing something to someone and walking off. It's you've got somebody there that can talk to them, you've got a treatment provider there that can talk to them, the people that are educated, the people that know this, that can talk with this person, and can actually share their own situation with them, and say, look, you know, look what's happened to me. I've been able to get where I am because of a program like this that helped me make that first step. We've got to show that we care. Law enforcement, EMS, they do. They're showing that, and they have been. They have been by the things that we've already talked about. I mean, you're saving lives, you're putting things in place where you can get rid of stuff, you're showing that we know that this situation's out there. What we didn't have as much of was, we didn't have the treatment and the availability of people to be able to go somewhere and get the help that they needed. Well, the big question that I was getting in the community was, where can we go? Because we've got to go outside of the county. Transportation's an issue, that was big. Well, now we've got it more locally and more readily, so, you know, it's giving them better opportunities. So when you've got that individual that's there that can talk with them one-on-one, I think that's going to give us more opportunities.
Right. Now, I know we've got a couple of treatment facilities, but do we have a detox facility?
We do not. We have to send them out of the county for that.
That's what this county needs, is a detox facility.
Right now, the closest one we're using, to my knowledge, is in Lexington.
Now, with y'all doing the port in Regisville, your hopes has expanded, so I guess you're going to be talking to the sheriff eventually, to try to get him onboard.
Sheriff and other police departments.
Right. So my question is, you said you, they went out to four people last month, right?
Four people, as of the last call, which was last week.
How many do follow-up visits? Go out there and visit with them, how many go back out there to visit with them again?
Well, we, if they stay there, the opportunity for the peer support specialist to go back, and that's usually who it is, we'll try a second time.
That's what I want to get to. How many visits second time?
None to this point.
None at this point.
No.
The reason I say that is, you know, you probably know this too, most people will not seek help until they're ready to seek help. And it's your job, just throw out the information, just say, hey, there's people here to help you when you're ready. And most of the time, if you keep going to them, eventually something clicks in their head, and they're like, okay, I need some help. But it takes a while to get to that point. It's not one visit, it's not two visits, it might take five or six visits.
Right. Six or seven is what we know. You know, we know that that's what that is, and I didn't want to put that out to you, gentlemen, and let you know that we know this, it takes six or seven times of doing it. And what we're hoping is, while we're doing this, is there's not another overdose event in there. At least they know that they can reach out, and even if it's with law enforcement, they know that they can reach out. They've got the information, too, that they can get back with the person that went out there to visit them. So the effort's being made, and we're learning along the way. We are learning along the way of how to improve this ourself. That's why it's so important that we have our treatment providers get involved with this, so they can go out there, because they're the ones that are going to be seeing you, not necessarily that they're trying to fill their own coffers, but to let you know that this is what we do. Also, this is what the person two blocks away does. You know, in Regisville, you may be two blocks away, literally, from a treatment provider, you just didn't know was there. So, yes, we need to follow up with it. That's one of the things we know we need to do, we need to work with better, we need the personnel to do it, we're growing with that, we're learning along the way.
Well, let me ask you, have you been getting data from the county? So you'll know monthly how many overdoses occur, you'll know if individuals had a third overdose in a certain amount of time, same person. So that can be something you can use to the courts to mandate certain kind of treatment facilities for them after that. Are we looking down that road, or we ain't there yet?
We're not there yet. I have been talking with the courts on some of the program that they're trying to initiate. I don't want to step out too far there on that ledge, but there has been discussion there. I have been over and talked to them, yes. They're just not there yet.
Well, thank you so much, I appreciate it. Keep up the good work.
All right. And again, I thank y'all for the opportunity.
Yeah, Drug Court is coming to Rockingham County, so that should be useful, and we have an aggressive judge heading that. Just out of curiosity, does your port team collaborate with AA or similar sort of support organizations?
The port team?
Yeah.
They have the information. I can't say that they collaborate, but they have the information of what's there. Mainly, it's MAT. That's best practice right now, is MAT. Through that, they're going to get them into the ongoing counseling that they need, and use the resources that's out there, mainly their own. But, you know, then if you can go through the treatment, then the recovery part of it, whether it's an AA or NA program or ongoing counseling, they're going to refer them to that and help them make that next step, from treatment to recovery.
Other questions, gentlemen? Well, this is very important, economically and human costs are significant. Thank you so much, Jeff, we're pleased to have you where you are.
Thank you.
Ms. Susan Young.
I think I got it from the beginning. There we go, you guys. All right, thank you, guys, for letting me be here tonight. Commissioners, to just update you on what is going on with COVID-19 in our county. And we will start off by giving you guys some numbers. So our state numbers are, we have 126,532 cases, 1,057 people in the hospital, 1,982 deaths, and Rockingham County cases, we hit 498 today, with nine hospitalized people currently, and unfortunately and sadly, we had our eighth death today. And this is some nice data that has been provided for me by Justin Stewart. We have worked together to get more data. You guys wanted to see some data, so we worked very hard to pull some data together. But as you can see, this is our cases by ages, and the 18-year-olds are winning at this point, 21-year-olds are coming in second, along with the 24-year-olds next, then 44 and 61. So that's kind of how our ages stack up for the current COVID cases. Cities of residence, Regisville is winning right now, Eden has a close second, but that's kind of to be expected, because they have the most population. Also, you can see Stambul has a lot, because the Latin X community lives predominantly in Stambul, and that is kind of a hot population right now to have coronavirus. This is the disposition of the cases, I know this is very small, but as we can see, 369 people have recovered, and we have 108 are at home recovering now, so that is a good percentage. 74% of our cases have currently recovered from COVID-19, and that is positive.
What was that, 74%?
Yes. So our outbreaks are currently focused mostly in work sites, industry. Since churches have opened back up and started meeting and having in-person meetings and church activities, that has gone up, that venue. Family groups, events, 4th of July hit us hard with a lot of picnics, a lot of outings and events. Vacations and hotspots. Myrtle Beach became a cuss word for a while for us, because, of course, all the kids at graduation went to Myrtle Beach and came back COVID-positive. We do have a lot of community spread right now, that we are not sure where the cases are coming from, but that is also a concern. Some of our weaknesses that we are still working around, we are now working out of three state systems. We went from NCEDs just today, they have opened us up a whole new system, which is just COVID-based, which is good. We've also had to work in a CCTO system, which is just where we do in contact tracing. So we have had to work in and out of multiple systems, and we've had a slow update to some of our statistical data from the state, some of our data has been incorrect. Also, the virus is changing, symptoms onset, timelines, isolation periods. Just about every Tuesday, we have a new update and a new change to that. We have staff fatigue, the amount of staff that we have, and we have been taking turns working the weekends and taking those calls. Our enforcement of stay-at-home orders has been challenging, to say the least. And we are now seeing COVID community fatigue. A lot of people do not want to wear their mask, they do not want to stay at home, they want to go out and resume their going to restaurants, doing activities, and that's really hard when you're trying to get people to stay at home. Where do we go from here? We're still in the same place, we're following the governor's orders, we're continuing to do contact tracing, but we're running up against now, the people who are positive do not want to tell us who their contacts are, they do not want to give us information. We are really having to really just say, you know, this is for the benefit of the whole community, you know, please tell us, we just want to get these people tested and, you know, make sure they're being followed if they have any issues or problems. And we have also decided to target test some age groups that have been negatively impacted, which is the younger population, we're trying to reach out. We met with Mabel and a group of people to kind of target maybe some Instagram messages, something that would target that younger population, to get the messages out to them. What needs to continue, social distancing, it works. The danger zone is less than six feet apart in an enclosed space for greater than 15 minutes, even if you have a mask on. They're still making us count people as contacts if both parties have a mask on, even if they're within, they do not meet this criteria, or they've stayed six feet apart and for 15 minutes. You have to wear a mask in public spaces, it protects others. Wash your hands frequently for 20 seconds, and we still have our resources that you can look up all our information, our informatics, we have kind of improved our data, so you can see the data, and we've added more data. So we're trying to get the numbers out there and what's going on. And the last thing I kind of wanted to say before you guys can ask me questions is about exactly what are people supposed to be doing, and I know this has changed. So if there is a positive case, we are asking that person to isolate for until 10 days have passed since symptoms first appeared, and 24 hours since their last fever, without any fever-reducing medications, and their symptoms have improved. Now, that is ever-changing, but that is currently what we're following. And we want contacts to that positive case to be in quarantine for 14 days, and if they want to be tested, it's five days after their last exposure to that person. It takes a few days to build that infection, so five days afterwards is the best time. And that's, you know, what we're trying to get across to everybody. You guys, I know you have some questions.
Commissioners? Well, Susan, thank you for that information. I am interested in the misinformation or inconsistent information that you're getting out of the governor's folks. What is the cause of that?
Well, I don't know if you would call it misinformation. They have just currently started giving us our cases, all our tests that's been done in Rockingham County. You know, we asked for that since the inception, since the first time that we met, we asked for that information. We are still getting that report sent to us by them, it's pulled out of NCEDs, but we can't pull that report ourselves. So we're just having to wait one week, and I get a lot of questions about the data, a lot of negative comments, why is this not updated every day? You know, why the amount of testing that we're doing here in Rockingham County? And the answer to that is, well, they only send it to us once a week. I mean, we can't update something that we don't have, but we only get once a week. So that is problematic. We get a lot of questions, you know, and we, sometimes we can call a person and we can get partial information, they don't tell us, you know, their age or their ethnicity, or we, you know, are trying to leave messages and we don't know if they're, you know, at home recovering or in the hospital, or gotten out of the hospital. So that's why we put a disclaimer on our information, too. It's a point-in-time snapshot. You know, I gave you information on what I had at 4:00 today. So this is a snapshot of the information. It's probably changed, we probably have another case, we probably have someone that may have gone into the hospital, or somebody that may have gone out, or, Lord forbid, I hope we do not have any more deaths, period. But, I mean, it's always a potential of it always currently changing. So we're doing the best we can, and, like I said, we have a lot more information that we can talk to about ages and things and dispositions, and we've tried to improve on that information, so we can get it out to everyone.
And the deaths that we've had, have they all had underlying conditions?
Yes, sir, they have. And it's been a varied age range. I think our youngest death was early 60s to 90s, so we've had a range, but everyone has had at least diabetes as their underlying condition. And it seems to be diabetes has a direct correlation to having more severe illness.
What about the, you said there's three different systems that you're getting information from or putting information into?
We're having to put information in.
Into three different systems?
Into three different systems, yes.
And those systems, are they all state systems, or some of them federal systems?
They're state systems, but then we also have to keep up our own internal system. So we also have our Excel spreadsheets that we have to work from ourselves, that is not connected to the state data.
Is that one of the three systems you're talking about?
We've had to work in REDCAP, which they have kind of done away with. We were in NCEDs, which had COVID embedded in it, they removed it out and made it a separate system, and then they have created what is called a CCTO tool, which is for contact tracing only, and that is a whole different system. It's not very user-friendly either, but... It's not very user-friendly either, but we are, we are having to deal with that. But the other thing is we have moved forward with getting some state help. We have got, the state has provided some contact tracers. They are paying those individuals. And we've tried to move that work somewhat off of our staff because we got 16 cases yesterday. One, one positive case at a time had eight or nine contacts. That's a lot of work to put on one person to do that. So we are very thankful for the state's help at least doing the contact tracing. And they're going to move forward with the state, hopefully helping us do some of the investigation of the cases.
And the, the programs that they, the state is, is having you put that information in, are they providing training?
Yes, they have provided training. I actually just took the COVID training myself this week and, well, last week, and it was very good. They did a good job with the training. That was very interactive. You actually got on the system. You had trainers there, and you had to move through steps like linking a case or putting a case in, and they went back and checked your work. If you were having issues or problems, they, you know, stopped and worked with you individually. So it was a good training. They did a good job with the training component.
But even after the training, it's not very user-friendly?
The CCTO tool is not very user-friendly. Now, NC Ed's is, is where they moved the COVID out. I think will be more user-friendly, but the CCTO tool is not user-friendly, so.
And the numbers that you're giving us are, of those that are tested, do we have any indication of what's really walking around?
No, we do not, because like some physicians are still doing televisions and saying, you know, you don't have to be tested. And the state has actually recommended on moving away from a testing model once again because testing times have spaced out again. We waited, actually, I kind of did a test for someone, and we waited 13 days to get those test results back. That's a long time to wait. There actually are their incubation period and, and being able to walk around, you know, day 14. So really, it was, was no benefit except the person knew at the end that they were positive and we could do better contact tracing.
Now, some of the numbers with testing that you have, do they include those that are voluntarily testing for travel purposes?
Yes, it includes everyone. If a person is tested in Rockingham County for any reason, those numbers are being rolled in.
Okay. And you say some of those tests are taken 13 to 14 days?
They were. It's improved a little bit. Now, our average is about five days to get your test results back.
Are there different types of tests?
There are different types of tests. Still, the gold standard is the nasal pharyngeal swab, and that is, there's new rapid testing out, the antigen testing, but they do not recommend that testing to be done on widespread. Basically, they won't let that testing to be done on individuals that are going into the hospital or who are extremely sick or already symptomatic. It's not just for people who are asymptomatic and they're trying to do a large amount of testing. It's really not as accurate, and you really want it to be accurate. And we hope, there's, there's two tests out there, you know, that we are using now that are, that is rapid, but they still just do not give you the 100% efficacy rate of having a positive test that you would like to see. They just don't recommend it for everyone. Any more questions?
I got just one question, and you touched on it briefly in Commissioner Berger's question. And how much staff time does it take you to run down an individual COVID case? I believe you and I personally had this conversation.
It can take anywhere from, you can try to attempt, we have now kind of set up a gold standard. The state has given us some guidance of trying to contact the person three times. If we cannot contact them three times, then we send them a letter. If the case is positive, I've actually literally myself drove out to the, to the address and looked for the person. It took probably two hours of my time. I had to take an interpreter with me. We did the sheet. We did the questionnaire. It probably took at least probably two hours of my time that day to go see one person that was positive, talk to the family members, do contact tracing, and make sure they got scheduled for testing. Yes.
Other questions?
Yeah, I got one. Susan, I'd tell your staff thank you. I know they're working hard on this, but we appreciate it, and we know, we know they're working hard. So a question I have is, I know a lot of our citizens have to go to Greensboro for elective surgeries or something like that, and they, they're required to have a test done. Are them tests reflected here?
Yes, if they are a Rockingham County resident, no matter where they get tested, if they get tested in High Point or they get tested in Alamance County or wherever, the, the data comes back to Rockingham County. Everything is kind of tagged to their county of residence.
Okay. Who, who pays for that test?
Most of the time, they go to free testing sites or either their insurance is billed and all insurances are covering COVID testing. Now, the only test we have found they will not cover is the rapid. I know we had some people go to High Point and get rapid testing, and the guy told us it cost him $200 and some dollars for that. And unfortunately, work is requiring people, some people to have that. We're trying to, we sent out information to try to get away from that because they're no longer, you know, really want us to do that. So we've sent out new guidance to businesses about that. And we don't want anybody to incur a $200 bill, you know, for, I hate that, for them to have to go back to work.
Right. So, so the county's not incurring any kind of cost?
No, sir. No, all the testing that we're doing here is free or the insurance is being paid.
Okay. And out of the, well, I guess what, 498 positives, how many of those actually had symptoms?
Probably, we're seeing less and less asymptomatic people because as the, I would say, the stigma continues, asymptomatic people are not being tested. They don't want to be tested. So now it's even hard for us to get contacts to be tested. So that, I would probably say, in the last 35 cases we've had, we've only had two asymptomatics, and they were contacts that we asked to be tested. People that are just not as randomly going out to be tested now as they were.
So out of the 500, how many actually had symptoms?
I would have to look back at some data to give you that exact number.
Okay, get that for me.
Okay, can do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really don't have a question, Susan. As Commissioner Travis said, I appreciate all that you and your staff have done. And, well, maybe one question. When you, you stated earlier about your time chasing down a point of contact, and you're saying you're beginning to get some relief from the state. States, are they compensating us? Will they allow us to hire some, some trace investigators? Because, I mean, I'm sure we could probably find some folks that have a background in investigations that would probably come back and do some contract work to, to help you do that. And you've probably already thought of that and reached out to some, but I know there's some folks that have that in their background that are maybe recently retired that could, could help with that. But really, my statement is, is that although I'm deeply disappointed, I'm not surprised that you're having the issues with the state and their software, the programs. You'd think that after the amount of time that COVID has been saturated throughout our nation and in our community, that if they would spend a little less, more or less time with organizing briefings and spend more time in actually developing some type of software so that we can track what's taking place in our communities. It shouldn't be that difficult. It should be something that's readily available to everybody in every community. I say that. Every community should have a health director or staff that can enter that number, and it's just, it's just amazing.
And as far as the contact tracers, they, the state has actually hired them through Community Care Network of North Carolina, so they can give us as many as we need. Right now, we are just sending them all our contact tracings that we are not kind of doing on the weekend or have personal contacts to, like they're, like an employee or that. But they are actually taking the whole caseload of contact tracing right now, which is, which is nice. We do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Good evening, gentlemen. I've got two items tonight for your consideration. And the first one is a recommendation by staff to purchase a GPS ionization system for 13 of the county's facilities. On July the 1st of 2020, we released RFP number 2015. This RFP was released on the county's website, the state IPS site for purchasing. And if we have local vendors that are signed up and signed up for alerts, they would have gotten alert as to that RFP going out. We received three bids back for the GPS system. The low bidder was Hoffman Mechanical Solutions with a bid of $243,875 for the project. We are proposing this to go into 13 buildings. They are the governmental center, DSS, economic development, veterans and family services, Ag Center, the courthouse, the sheriff's office and the jail, board of elections, animal shelter, Reesville Library, Eden Library, Stoneville Library, and Madison Mayadam Library. Some of the other benefits of the ionization system, besides deactivating COVID-19, it also deactivates SARS, COVID-2, MRSA, E. coli, tuberculosis, C. diff, norovirus, Legionella, and the Staph, Staphylococcus. I think I said that right. Susan, was that right? Okay, good. All right. And it also has a couple of other benefits. We have filtering systems in our heating and air for our buildings. And with the addition of the ionization system, this increases the effectiveness of our filtration system to take a lot of them up to the HEPA filter range for our buildings. And this project has the support of the public health, the interim director, the HHS director, and the safety and risk manager for Rockingham County. And I'll be glad to answer any questions or try to.
Commissioner Travis.
Your honor, thank you. Thank you for, to answer my questions the other night when we talked. One of the questions I have is, is this a self-cleaning system?
Yes.
So no filters have to be replaced?
That is correct.
So there should not be any ongoing expense?
Just the little bit of electrical that it pulls with the system.
Well, other than that, yeah.
Right, yeah.
How, what's the shelf life on this?
What I've been told is 30, 50 years, something like that, yeah.
I've been told 10 years.
No, it's longer than that.
Longer than that, okay.
Yes, sir.
Also, I guess, you know, I talked to you a little bit about the RFP process. I understand it, and I think you did right. Only problem I have is when new businesses come into county, they don't really know the process. They don't know they need to call the county and get on a vendor's list. So is there something in place that the county can actually contact new businesses or startups to say, hey, you know, we got a vendor's list. We have to send you, you know, RFPs?
Craig, I don't know that, I'm sorry, Commissioner Travis. I don't know if I can answer that or not, because that is through financing, through purchasing.
Right. So, you know, talking to Commissioner Hall, he had a good suggestion. You know, we, we know when new business starts up in the county. Why don't they pass that information on to economic development? Economic development go out there and introduce themselves to the county and tell them to get on the vendor's list, have a handout to talk to people. I think Commissioner Hall had a great idea on that, you know. My thing is, you know, talking to local vendors in the county, they, they didn't know about a vendor's list. Nobody's ever contacted them to be on a vendor's list.
Okay.
So then you tell me that we put it on the website. Well, a lot of them didn't even know we put it on the website. So we got to have a way for us as a county to reach out to our local citizens that own business here to make sure they have an opportunity to bid on this.
Right.
And I mean, you put it in the public website, that's great. I'm just saying, we got, we got to figure a way to reach out to our vendors, because every one of these people that RFP'd was from way, way away.
Right.
And I know, I understand some of this stuff is specified on how, what they put in, and you got to have a certain, you know, degree or license to be able to do it. So I understand that. I just, I just wish we would have reached out to our local citizens before we did this whole process, because some of them didn't even know what was going on.
Right, okay.
But I appreciate your hard work on this, and I, I agree. I think, you know, me and my wife, we put one of these systems in, in my house, because she's allergic to everything, and it helps, it helps all the line. And I, I think this would actually help, I guess, for our employees in the county to calm their nerves a little bit because the media scared them to death. So I appreciate your work on this.
Okay, you're welcome.
Are there any local providers that could install this?
Probably yes, but again...
That's an I don't know.
I, I don't. I don't know that.
That's right.
It's my understanding that it's not terribly challenging to install. It's self-contained. It can either attach inside the HVC unit with screws or magnets, and you hook the power supply up and turn it on.
Do you know who manufactures the units?
GPS, Global Plasma Systems, sorry.
We, we got to come up with a different acronym. That one, that one has another use.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Well, Ronnie, I just want to make sure I understand your answer when Commissioner Travis asked about filters. Your answer was that you would not have any filters to replace. Now, are you talking about any additional filters on the new equipment that's being installed, or are you talking about regular air-conditioned filters?
Regular air-conditioned filters, yes. We will be replacing those.
And I think, if I'm not mistaken, putting this on, you will likely have to change those more often because they're binding the particles together, creating larger particles, so they should be catching more stuff coming through the air. Is that right?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay. So there may be an increase in cost along those lines?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Now, I am kind of curious as far as, it's about a 30% difference in the low bid and the next highest bid. And my concern is whether or not they were of the same understanding of what they were bidding on. Who or what process was used to figure out exactly what systems to put this on or exactly what to put on our current air-conditioned units?
We had a rep come and look at all of our buildings, look at all of our units. They specified out the number of ionization bars to go on each unit, and that was what was provided, which each group bid on or bid with, I guess.
Okay. Because the, the global plasma systems, I'm not sure if they have a patent on, on this, but they seem to be the, the underlying provider, and then there's just, I guess, different vendors that, that install that system. Is that right?
I think that is correct, yes.
And so there seems to be a very large difference if they were in fact bidding on the same thing or of the same understanding of what they were installing or how many they were installing. And that, that just raises some red flags to me with the 30% difference.
I understand. When I reviewed the bids between the low bidder and the next lowest bidder, their, their totals for, for the bars, the ionization bars, were basically the same. They had, in one building, they had, one of the bidders had a few more, the other one had a few less, but if you take the total number of bars priced, they were virtually the same.
So, well, but who decided how many they were supposed to put on? Because you're saying...
That was, that was the rep that we had. It came and looked at each of our buildings and looked at each heating and air unit.
Well, how would one vendor give you a different number in one building than another vendor? vendor?
Now, that, I don't know the answer to.
Okay, so I guess that's, because that's where your, a good bit of your cost comes from, as far as them putting those units on.
Yes. Of, of the two hundred and forty-three thousand of the low bid, the cost for the units is two hundred and two thousand, ionization bars.
Okay. Then there's, there's another system that has come out, and I can't remember the exact name, but apparently there's an additional or some other variation of this where they take, I guess, something akin to a black light?
Yep.
And then kill off whatever's coming through? Do you know anything about that system and why this system as opposed to this other system?
Other than seeing this system versus ones that are just separate UV light devices, because this system sort of touches all the surfaces when it's dispersed out. UV light only touches what it sees in a room. This system goes through the heating air, through the heating and air system, disperses and touches everything. UV light doesn't do that. But if you're using, I haven't seen one where they use UV light in conjunction with this, but I would not be surprised if there's not one out there.
And is there any impact on what this is putting out on any of our employees or customers with asthma or other breathing issues?
No. It does not produce ozone, which is the truly harmful chemical. It's just ionized air. And it, it produces a, a single six-inch bar, which they come in six-inch bars, produces eight hundred and forty million ionized particles per cubic centimeter per second. And I think the small, maybe one of our buildings, one of our smaller buildings may have four bars in it, something like that. This building's obviously quite a bit more courthouse. Those types of facilities have larger amount of bars in them.
Mr. Chair. Ronnie, if I could, Mr. Tate, comparing, Kevin brought up the UV system versus this type system. And if I understood what you said, the, the UV system would only reach the items that it can see. This system, would, would it do plumes in other areas that, that are kind of isolated and out of the way?
Yes, it would blow through. Our plan is to, if you all decide to approve this, is to set up our heating and air systems to where the fans are running at a low speed but running basically all the time. And therefore, the ionization system would be running all the time as well. So it would be putting out ionized air basically all the time, all over these buildings.
And as you mentioned before, with this increasing the filtration capacity of our system of, it's basically cleaning the air better.
Mm-hmm.
So if I understood right, this will reduce the amount of fresh air that we have to bring into the building? Is that correct?
That is correct, yes. That is one of the other benefits associated with this. A lot of our buildings, we're pulling in fresh air that we have to heat and cool when we pull it in for use in the building. This will allow us to, to set that back some and hopefully save us in some energy costs of not having to heat and cool fresh air coming from the outside.
So while we may experience additional costs for filters and for a little bit of electricity, we should realize some utility savings by not having to heat or cool or process, rather.
That is correct.
Fresh air.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Especially in newer buildings because they're so insulated, so tight, we're pulling in so much fresh air to change that airflow in the building, change it over.
Okay. I have one more question, but it escapes me.
Sorry.
Mr. Chair.
I'm good, you go ahead.
Ronnie, I have one of those ultraviolet lights at my house.
Okay.
And it's in the air handler, and it seems to work fine in a residential setting. I probably do find myself changing my filters a little bit more because I have to run the fan more often. That being said, when I was looking over this, and I actually went, you can YouTube anything.
That's for sure.
And YouTube the actual installation of this system. And my question is in your RFP, because I haven't seen that. Could some of the difference or is the difference in the prices that were submitted in your, to your RFP, is that based on the number of product that they put in each air handler? And if so, is there a, a industry standard on how much should be in an air handler based on the size of the air handler and the building that it supplies? I mean, because that's quite a difference between, between four hundred and some thousand and two hundred and some thousand.
I agree. Again, the...
And all I'm saying is if one's putting eight six-inch bars in there and the other one's gonna put sixteen, which one is the necessary amount?
Right.
To do the job that we need in each building?
The, the rep that looked at it for reps, the, the GPS system, he, this person went to each building. We have looked at each.
But that was a rep for each person that was submitting a...
No, 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 sir.
You had a separate rep?
This was just a separate rep that we had look at it. We've had this, we've actually had this in the budget for the last two years, and it's been taken out of the budget. But the rep that looked at it for us with that had gone to each building, looked at each heating and air system or unit, determined the number of bars needed based on the, the tonnage, and that's the list that was submitted. And that is also the list that the second lowest bidder used as well.
So it's safe to say then that the difference in their bids were, was the labor associated with the, the labor associated with the installation? Because they're going to install, the product is the product that was gonna be installed?
No, he just answered that. He just said that that was the list the second lowest bid used, so, which brings the question, what list did the first one use?
The same list.
Okay.
They both used the same list of bars.
All three of them used the same list?
Now, I don't know about the third. That bid, I, I didn't, I looked at it and looked at the price, but it was so far out of line, I didn't do any other research on it.
Yeah, but...
But the first two, they used the exact same list that has the number of bars for each, each unit at each building.
And so that difference has to be the labor associated with this?
Dad or profit, I, I mean, I don't know.
Okay, that's all I got.
Well, I only have one question. You keep talking about two hundred and forty-three thousand. Why does our sheet say two fifty-six?
I added five percent to it for contingency. So, because we may, we may, we may have to run an electrical line to one of the units or something for it. It's my understanding that this can hook electrically to a low voltage thermostat wire or to a two-twenty line. And it's just, if we have an issue, we have to run an, an additional electrical line for some reason, but that's it.
I understand five percent contingency.
Yes, so...
So I just want to make sure, because you also earlier mentioned that some units had different numbers as far as the bids, but overall, they had the same number that they were installing. So I'm, I'm still kind of uncertain if they were submitting the same thing.
The, the totals were within, I think there were, the, the low bidder had three less bars than the second low bidder.
But if they're working off the same sheet, I'm not sure I understand why they were different at all.
And I, I can't answer that, why the second bidder chose to add three more additional bars. I don't know that. So...
Let me interrupt you if I may, Mr. Chair. So you're saying that the, the one, the second lowest bidder had three additional bars more than the manufacturer recommended?
That is correct, yes.
So the low, the low number has the number of bars that the manufacturer recommended?
That is correct, yes.
It's not that he's omitted three?
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
And say, say for instance, this building, the, the manufacturer recommended, let's just say twenty bars. And I can't remember which two buildings it were, it was, but one of them would have bid twenty, the other one may have said twenty-two. But in a different building where they called for eighteen, they may have said fifteen in that one. That's where the numbers are just a little bit different, but the total number is only off by three.
And the rep, are they affiliated in any way with the low bidder?
Yes.
The rep you hired?
The rep that looked at it for us originally and priced this out originally is the low bidder, yes.
So we don't have an independent rep?
He looked at it independently for us before we did the RFP, yes.
That's not independent.
I agree with him. Here's the bottom line. This system could be working beautifully or not working at all. How would we know? How are you gonna evaluate this microscopic benefit?
Well, when it's turned on, it's, it's tested, and they see that it's working correctly.
The rep that works for it?
No, that's not the answer, Ron. How are they gonna do it?
They have a device to test it. I don't know what that device is. Chairman?
I would think that's kind of important.
I would think if we had a, a rep, they wouldn't be employed by one of the bidders.
As a conflict.
If they're working for us, then they're working for us. If they're bidding...
I've, I've got some experience in this area, and I, it is, the techniques are not just nebulous, they're very difficult, and it's, it's easy to induce errors. So I'm just curious. You, you can't answer that right now.
Yeah.
I understand.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Based on the things that have come to light, the question, I've got the question, did all the bidders have access to all the same information?
Yes.
So e- even though the low bidder was somehow affiliated or done this other work, the other two people had access to all of that information?
Yes.
Okay.
What, when we looked at this originally to go into the buildings, we had a representative come and look at it and give us a price for it.
Is this the same rep?
Yes. We just, we wanted to see what it was. And then we did an RFP, given that information with the number of bars for each building for each unit. And it was submitted back in the RFP by three, three different bidders.
Commissioner Travis.
Ronnie, this, this ain't for you. I guess it's for John. Knowing that, I guess, the rep that evaluated our buildings is the same rep that works for the lowest bidder, could that be, could that be a potential lawsuit?
Oh, well, I'm not gonna get into too much technicality as far as a litigation discussion. That would be more warranted in a different closed session. But I, I think that it'd be something that's come to light that needs to be looked at, most certainly.
Have you looked at it?
I, this is the, this is new to me this, this evening, so...
Okay.
We, we do this quite often. We get preliminary pricing on stuff to see if we can move forward with it.
Sure, sure.
It's just the same that we do on a lot of projects like this.
And, and I don't have as much of a problem with that as, as I do with the fact that this is a relatively new thing that we're trying to learn about, and there's a large difference. And I want to know what's the reason for the large difference? And then when I hear that the rep is the low bidder, it raises a level of concern that the other bidders, I mean, that one was thirty percent, then the next one was what, another twenty-five or thirty percent higher than that one? So there's a wide range. I mean, they're not even close to each other. So it raises a level of concern that everyone was bidding on the same thing. And then the question is, who are we gonna have to go behind this person to make sure it was installed the way they submitted their bid? It can't be this rep.
So the question is, can we, can we reach out to the manufacturer and see if they have a third party, independent third party who could verify the installation correctly?
Right, and, and what we're supposed to have, that sort of thing. I mean, if, if they were within five percent of each other, or we had twenty bids?
Right.
Then I wouldn't be as concerned, but we end up with three bids, and there's a wide range. And this is a relatively new product, and the low bidder is the rep that we had hired to come in and tell us what we need. I just want to make sure that we're getting everything that we're supposed to get. And once it's installed, everything is the way it's supposed to be. I don't know, there's just some questions there that I'm just not real certain about.
What sort of warranty does it come with?
I, I don't know. I'd have to find out for you. I can get back with you for that information.
And it could be that everything's fine. It could be that everything works out great, but I've just got some questions at this point.
I know you can't answer this, but I would be interested at some time if you could find out. We gotta be able to pull these filters and find how much Staphylococcus is accumulating in our system, you know what I mean?
Okay.
That was a word you couldn't pronounce.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Ronnie, usually, where is the GPS Industries out of? Where are they located?
Hotty, Charlotte.
Charlotte? Do they have, Charlotte, so do they not have folks that market their product, that does, that does sales and stuff like that, that are a, do consultant works, that come up here and try to sell you their product, and this is what it does, and this is the facility you have, this is what you would need? You know, in my mind's eye, that's who I thought that you probably had come up, is somebody with GPS Industries, especially since they're out of Charlotte and says, okay, let's look at your air handler, all right, this is what our product does for this facility. And then I thought that, you know, in my mind's eye, that's what was in the RFP that went out to the potential vendors.
I, and I may be wrong, but I think GPS manufactures a product like a lot of companies, and then they sell it or let a dealer sell it to the public. And that's who bid it on it, were the dealers.
Okay.
In this case, the dealers are HVAC contractors.
Okay. So nobody with GPS comes out and does sales, uses their product?
No. You wanna come up, Bobby?
So Hoffman Mechanical Systems is who placed the low bid. Hoffman Building Technologies is who's the dealer for Global Plasma Solutions. So there's only so many dealers around, so most of the HVAC contractors that price to put this stuff in, they have to go through Hoffman to get the product because they don't, they can't go directly to Global Plasma. They don't have, they're not a dealer. So they have to go through Hoffman to get the product. So Hoffman assured me, they gave the exact same price to all the people that came to them and asked for the product. In fact, they even gave them the list of all the buildings and what they were proposed to put in them, so they would have that information. Gave them the exact same price to any dealers came to them that they gave to Hoffman Mechanical. So, because they didn't want there to be any kind of conflict there to say, well, we jacked the price up, so your bid would have to be higher. And I think the third bid was so high because we asked for, if you presented a product to say to put in our air systems, we were requested that you have independent third-party laboratory testing to prove that it works. We didn't want you to just be able to say, yeah, it kills coronavirus, but you don't have any laboratory test to prove that it kills. And the third vendor that priced it so high, he thought, when he read the RFP, he assumed that we wanted somebody to come in here and do air quality tests. So when he put all that in, to have somebody come and do air quality tests in all the buildings, that's why his bid is overfunded on the bowels and barrels.
Did he rebid once he found out that he didn't have to do that?
He came, if the bids had been opened, he came.
Okay, all right. Well, but that's a concern. He didn't understand the entire bid.
That's his own fault.
But...
Mr. Chair.
Ronnie, did, did all three of them not get the same RFP?
Yes, sir.
And they read the RFP, and they interpreted their way, and they submitted a bid based on their interpretation?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay.
Well, I'll just add my observation... Well, I'll just add my observation, having bought a lot of air conditioning systems, the price varies enormously. I mean, double, I've seen triple and I don't understand. I'll be interested to see our Health and Human Services assessment of how our sickness rate around here changes once the system is installed. You don't want another item to put on your to-do list, do you?
I'm not quite sure if I can, I mean, control the people.
Oh, HR, HR should be able to. Okay. Gentlemen, other questions? Do we have a motion to approve or deny this purchase?
I make a motion to approve the purchase.
Moved by Commissioner Hall. I'll second the motion. We have a motion to approve the purchase of this system. I think there are going to be ongoing questions there, Mr. Tate. And frankly, it's a new system and a lot of folks don't understand it. The question to me is always, is it worth what we're paying? And I think it's impossible to answer that question at this point.
Charlie.
We, we had the testing results that were in the packet of the rate of deactivation of the virus in a certain timeframe. And those are.
That's not us.
I'm sorry?
That's not us. We won't know until we start operating the system, how effective it is for us.
But those are the testing results recognized.
They're very impressive, very impressive. That's why I second the motion.
So you're assuming that it's put in properly.
And with the work you do, have you had any experience of putting or having subs put, put these things into anything that you've been involved with?
We have not. You know, if, if these guys are authorized dealers for the manufacturer, typically they'll know how to put in, how the manufacturer recommends it. The warranty says 18 months from shipment or 12 months after installation or final acceptance by the owner. So basically, we should have a one-year warranty on the system. I guess the one thing I may ask for, if it's the board's pleasure, is that we entertain some type of third-party testing to be sure that the thing has been done properly. You know, if the manufacturer has somebody approve with that or finds an HVAC engineer that would be willing to look at this and evaluate it to ensure that it goes in properly.
And they, they do make sensor equipment that you can actually see if it's putting ions out into the room without making it that at all. But, you know, of course, that would be additional cost and.
Well, but, yeah, I, I understand, but let's assume the equipment's right and the equipment's working. We're, I think what Commissioner Berger and others have mentioned is, we just want some kind of assurance that it's being installed in accordance with the manufacturer's recommendations.
And with what we put out for the RFP.
Right. Which, which I assume staff could do.
Yeah.
They can count the number of widgets, but as far as the rest of the installation, you know, I don't know, maybe there's a two-day class or somebody, something you go to and that may be the most effective way to do it. I don't know.
Okay. We can check with GPS on that if the board would like.
I, I would appreciate it.
Commissioner Travis.
No, I'm good.
Motion is on the table here, further discussion? Hear none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by saying nay. Go forth.
All right, I'll report back once we get started.
Item two.
Okay. The second item, it's, it's been a few months and I think it was earlier this year, the board at one of the meetings had discussed the potential for having a, the county look into having a shooting range, constructing a shooting range, finding a piece of property or building for that. And I think at the time, it was discussed of having an indoor range, not an outdoor range that would compete with several of the others in the county. When that discussion occurred, I spoke with the folks at North Carolina Wildlife Resources and at that time, they informed me that the money for 20, fiscal year 2021 had all been spent out and there was no funds available for range construction. During the blood drive, a couple, a week or so ago, Commissioner Hall asked me to check back with them. I emailed the wildlife reps and they emailed me back immediately and said that they think that they have up to a million dollars for us to support a project for a range in the county that would be open to the public. I do not have a lot of specifics. I was supposed to have a conference call with them this afternoon. The person from wildlife, their power went out and they, they canceled the call until tomorrow. What I would like to ask the board tonight is, is that still what the board would like for us to look at pursuing an indoor range open to the public? And if you would like for staff to devote time to this and move forward in the process?
Opinions?
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, what, what we had talked about and what I'd like to consider as to look at is to begin a study of, you know, how the funding source would work, how this would operate, what a design would look like, what it would cost, just to get a lot of this preliminary stuff out of the way. And then we could even see if it's feasible. So, you know, if we choose to do it later or we choose not to do it, one of the things I don't want to do, I don't want to compete with existing businesses and I don't want to discourage businessmen or entrepreneurs from opening a business, but I think this is a need that we've all recognized. We, we all get several calls a year with folks looking for this type of activity. The Wildlife Commission, you know, they're looking for folks to do training, safety training and other type of things to educate the public on how to safely use weapons. And that's why they're willing to help fund this. Every ammunition purchase, every gun purchase goes, money is put into a fund and that's where this money's coming from. So it's not coming out of local tax dollars. So it seems like it could be a good opportunity for us to provide a great service to the public without having to increase local tax rates.
Sounds great.
That sounds like a motion that we proceed for preliminary assessment?
I make that full as a motion.
Standby. Moved and seconded. Further discussion?
Well, I'm, I'm fine with the study. I'd have some serious reservations about the government opening up any sort of business. Governments have a history of failing at business. And just think that if we could do it and have a private entity come in and actually run it, that would be something that could be a recipe for success.
And that, that was your comments before when we discussed it earlier in the year and that would be the, when the preliminary discussions I've had with the wildlife people, that's what I've told them we were looking at, so.
All right. Mr. Chairman, if, if I could, yeah, in response to that, I agree with you. You know, a lot of municipal airports operate that way. The county owns the facility, but then they contract with an independent operator to operate the airport. And in this case, we could do the same thing and put this out for bids for a local entrepreneur to be able to use that facility and pay a rent back to the county.
Commissioner Pirtle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I feel like I'm on Family Feud. I can't hit my button fast enough. And that's, and, and the point that I was going to make is, is Commissioner Berger and both Commissioner Hall was, was right on. The only other thing I was going to add, excuse me, is, you know, one time, I think on that, on a game land right there off of the Loop Road that the wildlife folks purchased, I think when there's some discussions, several, and in an initial purchase about trying to put a, some sort of firing range on that property as it was developed, I think when they first started talking about it, I think they, they had some discussions about that would be a great location to have something that, which we're talking about right now. And I just, I just recalled that in those initial conversations before that land was purchased, if one of the things that was discussed was, that would be a good location to, and a good, excellent use of that facility is to incorporate some type of firing range down there. Albeit, I don't know that it would necessarily be an indoor range. I'd love to have an indoor range in Rockingham County. And as I shared with Commissioner Hall, I was contacted within the last three months about somebody interested in making a, moving forward with, with something, an investment like that in the county and I put them in touch with the folks, the powers that be. But yeah, Commissioner Hall and Commissioner Berger are right on point, but I appreciate it.
Commissioner Travis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with what everybody else says. I think it'll be a great asset for the county, but, you know, one time, guys, we, we talked about Rockingham County, what's it called, Lance, Recreation Department or Committee.
Parks and Recreation.
Parks and Recreation. One time we was talking about Rockingham County Parks and Recreation with these boat access, the, you know, walking trails and all this stuff we're trying, we really want to expand on. I mean, I didn't know something like this should be put to that committee or, I mean, we've got so much stuff going on.
If, if the board would like, we can. I'm the county rep for that board. We just started back meeting. We've had two since, we canceled them, I guess, in March when the virus hit. If the board would like, I can bring it up to them. We're trying to sort of get momentum back after the, the stoppage of meetings, so. But if, I mean, that's up to the board. I'll be glad to mention.
I don't know if you need to put the firing range with the Parks and Recreation if you want to do an independent, someone independent to run it. So I don't know how this board feels. That's why I brought it up.
I would say that the grounds committee may be the best committee to put that into. I mean, we're looking at location in addition to what else may be needed as far as a study.
Perhaps we can modify your motion to do this preliminary staff study in concert with the grounds committee.
Okay.
I'll amend my motion.
I'll second.
And second. Other points? I will call a question at this time, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie.
Thank you, Ronnie.
New business, Mr. Metzler. Mrs. Farrell, how nice to see you.
Good evening, gentlemen. How are you? I'm going to try to be very brief tonight, if that is okay. We received information from the state that we were going to be getting some funding down the road. We've actually been getting kind of emails about this since about late April, early May. The state did receive the funds for COVID-19 Recovery Act and they are specifying that that, that funding has to go to Adult Protective and Child Protective Services. Our county has been awarded a little more than $114,000 to be utilized for additional staff and costs for adult protective and child protective services. So we received that information and obviously it is not in our budget, so I bring it before you so that we can go ahead and use this funding to bring in some additional staff during the period of time that it specifies.
Okay, I think I understand your actions, so our actions should be to approve yours.
That would be nice.
Okay. Would somebody move that we accept this under?
Second.
And second. Further discussion? Hear none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I appreciate it. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I may, I had a question for Lance before we move into the next. Lance, looking back to our, our previous discussion with Ronnie Tate, one of the things we talked about on that $256,000, will you share where we hope to pull that money from? I know we, we didn't discuss it, but.
Come from the CARE Act Fund. We've got about, what was it, $2,000, $2.4 allocated to us. We spent some of it on PPE and some of the other stuff, so it comes from those funds.
Comes from the restricted funds from the federal government?
Yes, sir.
And this is one of the allowable expenses?
Yes.
Thank you.
You should have told us before, we'd had a lot shorter discussion. We're good at spending other people's money, I guess. Any other new business, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
We'll go to Commissioner Comments. Commissioner Travis?
No comments, Mike.
Commissioner Berger?
I just thank everyone for being here. Good to see some folks coming back in person and appreciate everyone tuning in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berger. Mr. Pirtle?
Maybe he's going to get to go twice. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank everybody for being here. Appreciate you coming out tonight. Meeting lasted a little bit longer than we thought, but I think we got some good things done. I just want to be remiss tonight if I didn't say that we lost a, one of our fellow Rockingham County natives, Mr. Mitchell Wilson passed away on July the 30th, 96 years young. He was a WWII Navy veteran, but he was a big developer here in Rockingham County. He developed a, a lot of property, but people think of just a golf course that he owned, but he, he developed a lot of, was involved in a lot of development here in the county. He was, he and his wife Dot was also longtime supporters of the Salvation Army here in Rockingham County. And I know that he was a great man, left a great footprint here in this county and he will be missed. So with that being said, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Want to thank Sheriff Sam Page for being here tonight and his staff. Also appreciate Doug Isley, one of our school board members here tonight in attendance. Thank you for being here. I also want to mention, I got a email today from someone who had paid a visit to the animal shelter recently. And she called to praise the animal shelter staff and how kind and professional the staff were. The shelter was very clean and the animals were well cared for. She'd like to urge everyone to donate needed items to keep this shelter running and she plans to make a donation herself. She said she could not believe what a great experience it was and she wanted management to know the workers deserved praise for doing a great job. So thank you, staff at the animal shelter. We appreciate it. And with that, I'm done, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I too welcome everybody and appreciate you being here. It's a little bit awkward to say the least, but I think kudos belong to our county manager for setting this up so that we are able to have as much personal contact as we do and I appreciate that. I'd like to put a plea out to the public at large. We haven't had as many nominees for our Volunteer of the Month program. And so if any of you know folks worthy of being recognized by this body, we'd appreciate you letting us know and you can do that through Ms. Jennifer Wood over there. We'd be glad to take those. I'd also like to remind everybody to consider and be even more diligent in your social distancing and hand washing and mask wearing and all of those activities that minimize the danger of COVID infection. Our numbers are really pretty good in this county and I think the good part of that is probably due to the diligence of those folks' practice and such maneuver. But perhaps if all of us do that, we can get to a position where more things open and we can get closer to a normal situation. Gentlemen, are there other items, comments that need to be addressed at this time?
Move to adjourn.
We got a motion, second. All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed by nay. We are adjourned.